We have a pro temp. Do we have a quorum?
Yes, sir, we do.
Having a quorum, I now declare this meeting open. Lonnie, will you leave us an indication, please?
Lord, if we bow and I to enter this meeting from the city, Lord, we just ask you to bless the families that have lost loved ones in the last week or so. The community and county has lost several people. Lord, we just ask you to look over the sick with the flu and watch over, give everybody health as soon as possible. Lord, we ask you to watch over this mayor and council as we move forward through this meeting and for the betterment of the city. Amen.
John, would you please pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, the agenda is in front of you. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as submitted. Someone?
Second.
Second discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Please note that it is unanimous. Counsel, I entertain a motion to approve Brandon Douglas as our interim clerk until such time as we power his full time.
So moved.
Have a motion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Please report as unanimous. Counsel, we have in front of you the minutes from the June 6, 2020 regular meeting. I entertain a motion that we accept the minutes as given.
Summon.
The second. Motion and the second discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Discussion of municipal court. Is there anyone in this audience who would like to come forward and speak on this before we have our meeting? Counsel, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve for the mayor and city attorney to negotiate a contract between the city and Robert Snead to serve as municipal court judge for 2020. A motion and a second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Please report as unanimous. Counsel, I need a motion to authorize Robert Snead to act as interim municipal court judge on behalf of the city until the council formally approves his contract.
So moved.
Have a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Please report as unanimous. Counsel, I need a motion to authorize the mayor and county attorney to negotiate a contract between the city and Joe Hudson to serve as prosecutor for the municipal court for 2020.
Mayor, I'm May. The city attorney. Use that camera. Just to clarify, city attorney?
No, city attorney.
Between the city and Joe Hudson?
Yes.
So moved.
Have a motion, second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Please report as unanimous. Counsel, I need a motion to approve the mayor and city attorney to negotiate a contract between the city and Courtney Stewart to serve as public defender for our municipal court for 2020. That's motion and a second. A second. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Please report as unanimous. Counsel, I need a motion to authorize Joe Hudson to act as interim prosecutor on behalf of the city until the council formally approves his contract. Have a motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Please report as unanimous. And counsel, this is my last one of these for a moment. Need a motion to authorize Courtney Stewart to act as public defender on behalf of the city until council formally approves her contract. And a second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Please report as unanimous. I need a new business discussion of council committees. Going to ask Brandon to come forward and tell us about his idea of how we can do this. What mission?
Mayor, council. The document in your packet is what I'm proposing as a 2020, 2021 department co-chairs slash liaisons. In terms of conducting business at the staff level and concert with the elected body, you all have utilized committees in the past. Y'all do have some standard committees. What I would like to do is get some buy-in tonight in terms of the discussion for you all to serve as co-chairs on the police and fire, or public safety, however you want to phrase it, streets and parks, administration, development, and then water and wastewater. Ideally, what I would be asking is you all as the elected body, at times there are things that come up, such as a personnel policy or the retirement policy that we had went through last year. Mayor Weaver had appointed council member Proctor and Snead on the committee to look at the retirement. What I'd like to do at the staff level is know that when we do have an initiative that is forthcoming or it's in the works or there's been a directive from council, then we've got this community already established of the administration committees. So what happened is dealing with human resource matters, financial matters, which is obviously HR and personnel, finance, customer service, city hall workings, kind of the admin is to catch all that. Job descriptions, pay scales, any pay studies, things that may or may not be germane to the 2020 or 2021, but establishing this, I guess, for my purposes would afford me the opportunity of knowing that if we've got a zoning ordinance amendment that staff is proposing, we could facilitate discussion amongst the planning and zoning commission, a couple of members there, and/or one or two of the co-chairs from the development. Same way with, we've got SPOST coming up, July of 1, 2020. We'll officially begin the 2020 SPOST. We've got monies allocated for street, stormwater, public safety, parks. So there will be some capital funds available at the end of 2020, beginning of 2021. But as we look at projects, you know, it doesn't preclude the entire board or council, but I like to call them liaisons, but you know, I call them co-chairs because as elected leaders, I want y'all to have the buy-in to say, well, how about tweaking it or adding this or that? And I can present this to the full council, which is a practice that you all are accustomed to doing. But I just wanted to kind of put it on the forefront to say, you know, here are some places where you all could have some input or buy-in. And I'm mirroring that of what we do for the mayor pro temp of two cycles. So Mr. Mooney is 2020, 2021 mayor pro temp. So the liaisons will be 2020, 2021 as well.
I believe we have a guest in the lobby. She was down there, there's something on the hallway. She was walking around.
And once again, this does not preclude anything from the full council or the public. It's merely an opportunity to kind of get on the forefront of something that needs kind of the initial buy-in of the elected.
So clarifying, you're looking at this for two years, like you could be chair for two, the co-chair of police and fire for 2020 and 2021?
Yes, sir.
And then you could also have another co-chair for that particular period?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so.
And we could, we could structure it any way you want. You could do it to where you have one roll off and one stay on. This is an opportunity for you all to kind of establish what you think would be a best practice in terms of saying, well, let's stick it out for two years and let's reevaluate how we do the standing appointments. I just, this initial stage, mirror that of mayor pro temp.
I'm curious to hear from counsel as to how they feel about being on there for two years instead of one roll off.
I think sometimes though, being on one year, you get in the middle of trying to do some things and then you roll off and somebody else is on and you're not always able to continue the path that you were doing.
So I feel like two gives you more effective.
I feel like two gives you a little more effective because you get in a position and you're able to do some things with a little bit more time.
Plus it works out good with the next cycle.
That's true.
It really does.
Well, another thing that, you could do the same thing by having one roll off and one stay on each, each cycle. At the very least, I'd like to see one person stay on there for two years.
I think for the work we have to do this year, to do a bunch of work and then roll it off would be a little.
I think if we're trying to do it for two years and then maybe reevaluate in two years, we may be in a better position to say, let's have them rolling it off every other year or something like that. But right now, I agree with the work that needs to be done.
So clarification, Brandon, you're talking about an administration committee? Is that the one that we've already established, Ann and myself, or?
Yes, sir. What I'm looking at is this is 2020, the term, this mayor, this council. So this is literally the blank slate.
So we're starting over.
Okay.
So if we went, as an example, starting here and going this way, and you pick one of these categories, and then everyone pick one, and then we get down to Jim, who would go after the last, let him pick two, then we can turn around and come back. Just to say as an example of how we could come up with and not have it. And then move off and write it down as you choose. Unless y'all have a better idea.
Mr. Douglas, do you have any recommendations from your level of?
I will, I will tell y'all that quite candidly, each of these five, there are exciting things and opportunities for us to discuss. And to the point earlier, 2020 may be a good opportunity for some of the legwork, the groundwork, the establishing things, and in the 2021 could then see some of the implementation of some of the planning. And like I said, what I want to make sure that for the mayor and council and for the public, this does not preclude any particular issue that is ripe for the decision to come before this council for a full vote. It's just at times there are months of planning or going through a purchasing policy. And so what would happen is there would be the general direction of, okay, well, we need to establish a more robust purchasing policy. Therefore, here's a draft document that management in concert with the co-chairs have drafted for the full council's buy-in and comments. And then if it needs to be sent back to the committee for modifying or redoing, then that's kind of something that we've at least established the groundwork rather than me coming to you all just merely at a staff level with a document with no elected buy-in, no policy-making buy-in, and then establishing a committee, and then the committees coming through and saying, okay, well, why did you do it this way? And so it just kind of streamlines it. I don't know if that helps or, I don't want to put you off because I know each of you all have your strong suits in terms of your own professional, your own profession and/or your own interests. But candidly, any number of these five, I can tell you that the next two years, we have a lot of opportunities to occupy your time. And I'm just asking for some assistance in some of the policy guidelines.
So let me ask one further thing, I think that you and I had previously discussed, was that assuming that you have two members on any given committee, that they would then on their own go back out to all of the other members and update them as to what was going on? So one of the things that we all talked about was having full transparency so that everyone knows everything. And this is how, I don't know a better way to do it, to achieve what we want.
So I can tell you that we do need to address the zoning ordinance. Mr. Siphon and I along with Lonnie have spoken at length about that. So if you're interested in serving on the development committee, that would incorporate a zoning ordinance review. Admin does deal with the finance and/or the HR. So from a purchasing policy and a personnel policy. The personnel policy is the internal guiding document of how you do everything from job descriptions, job qualifications, pay scale, even as much as establishing, do we look at organizationally an opportunity for two positions of one clerk, one finance? Or do we do a combined? You know, how do we look at that? And then as we go through any sort of interviewing process, that particular council member or members would be kind of on my team of looking at qualifications. Water, wastewater, obviously there's a need to evaluate the wastewater capacity and as we continue to look at our increase in our water. So how we move forward with, with that is huge. Police, fire, obviously it was huge in SPOST to incorporate some sort of need and desire to have a police slash fire precinct along the 515. So we do have some capital monies coming from SPOST, which might be a 2021 implementation. 2021 obviously is a good opportunity to plan. Streets and parks, we've got sidewalks, stormwater issues. Obviously, there's a lot of interest in parks as we continue to enhance our existing inventory and continue to expand other places. So Councilman Rafferty, I just want to make sure, it is very hard for me to, you know, all of these, I'd love for y'all to be in every single conversation, but some of the intimate details, I would have to defer to one or two periodically committee and then come before the full council when it is ripe for a decision. So policy decision is what I would be seeking from this collective body. That answer?
For the benefit of the council members, and not that y'all know this, but also for the public, the success of a volunteer committee, it works for armed servants, but to a great degree, it's volunteer work that we're doing. Passion about what you're doing is important to drive in the process. I think this affords the opportunity of the elected to interact on this with the staff in a way that we've done only informally in the past. I think it could be potentially a powerful tool to get the little bit of work we have to do. Of course, I'm empathetic, but so I think it's, I think it's a great idea.
So what's?
Do you want to motion on how to proceed with this, or?
I don't know that we actually need one of those.
Yeah, I would, what about, how about you just? I was just going to pencil in, you know, if you wanted mayor to start off on one side and someone can kind of.
Are you satisfied with that? At the limit, you get two gigs. You satisfied with your last?
I get the, I get the first one and the last one. Well, based on my recent experience.
Passion.
Passion, I would like to be on the development committee.
Development, okay.
And again, I've been visiting the planning, zoning, economic development, other, other things.
And this.
This will freak some people out in the public world.
And that puts you into 2020 and 2021.
Yes, sir.
On development, okay. And Mr. Rafferty?
I would be honored to serve for police and fire.
Police and fire. Mr. Fouse?
Streets and parks.
Streets and parks.
Streets and parks.
I am shocked.
So far, no surprises, right?
Okay. You say?
I'd like to do administration.
Administration. Administration?
Yes.
For me? Is it your turn?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you would like to have administration, that puts you as a co-chair on that. And you get one more, Jim.
Police and fire.
Police and fire. And you're going to?
Government. Streets and parks.
Streets and parks.
Now, Mr. Mayor, if I could, just to interject, I should have done this earlier, but I want to show favoritism. Mr. Hall is not in attendance tonight. I told him he did not have to be here. But he did specifically name a person, and I did not want to be missing and recognize Mr. Fouse for water, wastewater, for whatever it's worth. I don't want it to influence you on your last pick.
That's fine, but that was my thing.
But I did want to make sure that I put that plug in for David and not do it in jest, sir.
Okay. And Councilman Rafferty? You got another pick?
I believe I'll serve on the middle one.
So, clarify for me which committee Mr. Fouse is serving on as co-chair?
Uh, he is serving on streets and parks.
Streets and parks and water?
Water. Wastewater.
Wastewater or water?
Same, good study.
Oh, okay. I thought maybe that last one was.
But we also have zonings.
There's only one left.
Zonings? Do we have zonings?
Yeah.
Yeah, Kurt took.
As long as it's a combined.
Okay, let's put Sunny, the boss, left.
On the water, wastewater committee.
It's a decided committee.
Could spend years, time power.
Counsel, that was an interesting process. Thank you for your participation there. Now, Brandon, I think that we wanted to have a discussion about standing meetings as our next.
Yes, sir.
What is your vision for standing meetings?
It is an opportunity to expand upon the already established first Monday of each month regularly scheduled council meeting. What I'd like to do in your packet is a color-coded 2020 calendar along with the 2020 Jasper Municipal Court for reference. So what you'll notice is the color-coded first Monday is already illustrated in yellow. And with the exception of September 14th, they all pretty well fall on the first Monday. And then the, there's been a desire to look at work sessions. Work sessions can be where you're in effect almost helping to set your agenda. They can be working through some items that may come up from committee to a work session that staff thinks is ripe for a decision. But yet going through a work session, it could be revealed that some more work is needed. So the work session, it kind of serves that purpose. In an ideal world, you can have some public hearings set up on work session nights because at a public hearing, you are not making a decision at times. You are sometimes just having a public hearing and you may defer a decision or discussion to a regular. So if you've established a calendar whereupon you have standing meetings, it gives staff, you all, and the general public, and businesses, et cetera, an opportunity to know that there is a scheduled meeting of the mayor and council along with a work session. I've also incorporated proposed planning and zoning. Mr. Waters, as our development manager, can attest to the fact that we've not always been able to communicate to applicants when the next meeting would be. So as we transition into next Monday's special call meeting to talk about boards and commissions, if you all would entertain this, or we can discuss it, it gives even your volunteers an opportunity to know that on the fourth Tuesday of each month, we have a commitment to a meeting. That does not mean you're going to have it. You may not have a work session. You may not have a planning and zoning. If there are no items to present, you merely post an agenda that says that the meeting is canceled due to no items to present. And then you fulfill the obligatory statute of advertising. And lastly, I will tell you that I've put in there holidays in purple. We do have them on our website. What I would like to bring up is one holiday that is not on our website, that has not been proposed. But if it's something that y'all would like for us to pursue, we can, is Good Friday. This year, it falls on the 10th of April. As a practice at times, city hall was periodically closed after lunch on that day. I would prefer to have council authorize me to either A, recognize that as a holiday, consistent with how here are others, or half a day, or if y'all would prefer, we can continue to stay open for that business day. I had experienced being off that day. I've experienced working that day. So I have no professional preference. I will withhold my personal, but professionally, I have no preference professional.
Let me ask you one question. Is, is the county closed? The county offices closed on that day?
I believe so.
Okay. So now, do you need them?
That is where I would probably ask Mr. Siphon if we would want to formalize that through a regularly scheduled meeting on the 3rd of February.
Okay.
Recognizing that as a, an official holiday, if that's something that y'all want to entertain.
We can do that. One other thing, one other question. One other thing, one other question. If we approve this scheduling, that does not necessarily set those dates in stone because you still have the option to move them as necessary.
The mayor and elected body do have the ability to have special call meetings. But this is just something that if an applicant comes in, it gives us the ability to say, well, that doesn't require a planning and zoning decision. It's for council to consider, but it may have some discussion, some lengthy discussion. We know we're going to have a work session on this date, so it gives that person the ability to schedule. And y'all can be here as well.
Mayor, if I would, if y'all go ahead and approve the calendar, that'll allow Brandon as city manager and clerk to post for the entire year the meetings. And that will help us comply with the Open Meetings Act. And I'm sure the media would appreciate knowing in advance what your means are. Before you vote, though, I would note that the work session for November, I think, is falling on Thanksgiving. And the work session for December is falling on Christmas Eve. So I thought y'all might want to...
We noticed that also, and that's why I was asking if we could have, even if we approved this, that we could have, that would allow you to move those off of those holidays.
And from time to time, I do want to make sure that y'all actually look at it. So it's very good, thank you for that.
You'd be proud of us.
And to that point, that is why, for the discussion of this, because I no way know what y'all's immediate thoughts are, this is very much open for y'all. This would be y'all's calendars of sorts.
Mr. Siphon, the Open Records, Open Meetings Act, what are the requirements on canceling? Or are there timeframes for canceling previously scheduled meetings? The Open's Meeting Act is more concerned about you meeting. So it doesn't really set out in detail how you go about cancellation. I would recommend, just from a courtesy view point, that, you know, as soon as you know you're not going to have a meeting for whatever reason, at least 24 hours before the meeting, especially for the media that, you know, makes the effort to come to every meeting. I know they would appreciate knowing in advance. I don't, from a legal point of view, I don't have y'all, I don't have a problem with you sitting the first Monday and the last Thursday, and then y'all can change it if you want to during the course of the year. You'll always have to have 24 hours' notice to the media as to that change in the, in due posting and...
If you're adding a meeting, if you're moving in?
Well, if you're moving in or adding a meeting. And usually, if you give the media a 24-hour notice, it's not an issue. You know, they just want to be notified that you're going to have a meeting.
Counsel, what's your pleasure? Do you want to?
I would like to make the motion that we set the calendar equipped with a couple changes. Have our November workshop on December the 3rd, then our December workshop on December the 30th. And I recommend that we have a full holiday for Good Friday.
I would ask, do we know what it would cost us to do that? How many holidays are you going to have?
I will tell you that when I've explored that, apparently, the floating holiday that you all had approved some years back, I think, had the intent of giving the employee the ability to take off on whatever day they want to recognize. So I'm torn about the floating holiday. To me, it's a personal day, part of, I'm not saying an entitlement, but it's a benefit for the employee. In terms of the exact cost per day, you've got the essential slash non-essential with public safety working anyway. And then essentially, you're having City Hall staff closed.
Would it just be City Hall stuff or streets and?
And streets and water, wastewater. Once again, you've got a 24-hour operation that some would. What that does is the people who are working that day already as essential, it gives them the ability for the holiday day. So in terms of the exact cost, I can get that, but...
There are 12 holidays now, there aren't?
Eleven. Eleven and a floating, or? Twelve. I would, 12 is what the state has. I don't know about the county.
The county changes?
I would...
I think nine. Part of 11 plus floating, 12.
That's what I remember. I would like to consider going away with the floating holiday. There is vacation time available for that. And our employees do have significant vacation, most all of them.
We have a motion with a second?
We're in mental discussion, and you're right, we shouldn't have had a motion, but...
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
No, we do not have a second.
We do not have a second.
Because I just asked the question.
I'll second it so that we can discuss it legally now.
Okay, discussion? Continue.
Yeah, I'm... So the state has 12. If we do away with the floating and just make it on Good Friday, that still gives them the same amount of holidays, but yet, they can... Are you good? I mean, I'm...
Is that covered in the motion? Wouldn't that be covered in the original motion?
No. No.
Is there something that we need a little more information on? On this area?
I don't think, since we're going to change the floating to that holiday instead of a floating holiday, that it's not going to really... My concern is if we added one, what it was going to do to the budget.
I need to... What would it do to employee morale to take away one of their holidays?
I would, I would say that we're recognizing Good Friday as a holiday.
Not really taking it away. Just telling them that it's taken.
Yeah. The floating holiday is no longer floating.
Yeah, it's floating to Good Friday.
But I will say, for purposes of discussion, if I may, Mr. Siphon can... This is part of what Mr. Looney had brought up and what Ms. Anne and I talked about too. As you get into the personnel policy and as you look at accruals and leaves and holidays and other things, that will need to be worked on. So we're going to still have continued conversations about things. So if you would prefer to hold off on that with the concern of the budgetary implications, we can extract that from this calendar momentarily. I wanted to put this out there on a very, one of the very first meetings in January as I committed to y'all of beginning the discussion so as to not make y'all feel like there had to be something set in stone. So if y'all wanted to approve the calendar, less that add-on that I put to provoke discussion, then to Mr. Siphon's point, staff can go in and post this. And then as the committees work on different things, we could then come before y'all with, hey, this is the schedule of our holidays. Here are the implications if we add one or replace. In agreement with employee morale, I agree. I did want to provoke the discussion, though, while we're talking about the calendar. So to y'all's pleasure, how you want to proceed?
I agree with that. I see these as two items, one made on the agenda, one not. I believe approval of the calendar itself is completely separate. Wait on the holiday until due count.
So at present, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Could I ask you to withdraw your motion and restate?
I will withdraw my motion and restate that we approve the calendar with the work days for November to be moved to December the 3rd, the work day for January to be moved to December the 30th, and approve the calendar for those changes. And I will...
Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Please report your names.
Now, I'd like to make the motion that we discuss in maybe the workshop that we propose to do the holidays or how we should address the floating.
Address all of them, is what you're saying?
Put it on the agenda for the work session on the 27th.
Yes.
The work session will be 27th, the 28th, is that the?
27th.
27th, okay. So we have a motion on the floor to discuss the holidays. Discuss the holidays, and that's it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, put that on the agenda for the 27th. And did I hear a second?
I believe we did a motion for it.
Probably just put it on the agenda. I would ask you to put it on the agenda and withdraw the motion.
Withdraw the motion? Would you please just put it on the agenda?
Okay.
But that does bring up one point that's not on our agenda tonight. And I think we can discuss that next week. I want to send each of you, I have the list that you have sent me of names for what we're going to be discussing next week, which will be committee assignments. And I will email them to each of you. Instead of compiling, then what I did was take your original list and then just strike through so that you can readily see. And also, on some people who were put on the list, I'm not so certain that they were inside the city. So look at the list as I sent it to you, I sent that out tonight. And then what I would ask you to do is to go down your list and talk to our citizens and find out their response to serving. So what we're looking for is an entire pool of citizens who will serve us on different committees. And if they speak about a specific one, make note. But you can go out to your contacts and let's see if we can get them to serve by next week, if possible. So I will email that out so that everyone can see everyone else's name tonight.
So just for clarification, there are some of those appointments that people can live outside the city, particularly that one of the authorities.
One of them.
Correct.
Right. So there are enough names on that are already outside that we don't have to look for anymore.
Okay.
Yes, so let's talk to the, let's talk to the ones that you think that are inside. We have plenty of the outside, but we need to fill the ones that live inside the city.
Okay.
Okay? Any questions? Counsel, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So Mayor, before you did that, I do like to ask a question. If you don't mind, before you adjourn. Just as the press knows, I am the city court judge.
Counsel, do you have any objection to listening to this? I did ask it front.
I withdraw my motion.
I am scheduled to...
Please proceed.
May I continue?
Please proceed.
I am scheduled to sit as city court judge next Tuesday. Do I understand for planning that you have terminated me as city court judge tonight?
I don't know about the word termination and whether that's inappropriate. Would you speak to that question, termination?
It wasn't a termination. It was a decision by the council not to renew your services for another term.
I did not hear a stated cause. Can you tell me what the cause was?
In that you don't have a current stated term, you're an at-will, I guess, service provider. And the council doesn't have to have cause to end the relationship since you're an at-will service provider.
Thank you for your... I'm sorry, I don't have enough for all the council. I think I need one copy short. Thank you, folks.
Would anyone further? I want to put a follow. If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So we...
We stand adjourned.